A set of property is known as the Village District. B Village.
George Kurtz, I represent the applicant zero, uh, ZBT Energy Solutions. We'll be joined also by Dr. Bradigan, who is the attorney for Overland. We respectfully request that the board give us one more month as myself and Attorney Bradigan still work on some issues. I know that it's been noted for tonight, but I believe they'll probably be able to give you a much more thorough presentation in thirty days. So we're respectfully requesting a one-month extension on the public hearing.
Do we?
I'd like to make a motion. We give the applicant one month extension from today.
Do we need to get a date?
Our next meeting will be March 20th. Have you one for today?
We have already extended the time deadline for decision, final decisions. I'm sure they're well within that time anyways. So any requests for that? But if you give us a date, what was the date?
It's March 20th.
March 20th, great.
George, if you would wait a second, we have a letter from Zero Point dated January 22nd. So I think it says, "Take final action beyond ninety-eight period to allow for the planning board to file the certificate of action with town clerk by April 1st, 2019."
So lady time, we can deal with any other extension on March 30th. You know, forget that.
Second motion. Continue to watch for it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
So then that's it for?
So we don't get to say nothing?
No. The presentation will come on March 20th.
Next one, you guys should ask us first. I mean, I have an autistic kid. I have an autistic child. I'm the one who's going to be affected the closest.
I'm sorry. We have no control. They didn't have a presentation ready, so we can't, we can't, we don't have anything, anything to talk about. There's no presentation.
Right. We didn't know about it. You heard it when?
Well, you should, you should, you should have asked if any person was here against it, and you didn't. You shouldn't approve it.
We didn't approve anything, sir.
You gave them an extension. You should have asked us first.
I'm sorry, but that's not your prerogative or the we.
It is my prerogative because I'm the one that's going to be fixed right next to the access rooms.
Please come on March 20th and you can tell us everything.
Well, you should have asked us here before you emailed.
There's nothing to discuss at this point.
Well, if anything, the question you should have asked that gentleman was how long did you know you needed more time? Instead of having us come tonight.
So sign up for, uh?
Our next hearing, please.
Zero Point on Brookfield Road, anybody?
You guys don't want to hear it.
Zero Point, do you guys get her?
Yeah.
So the next hearing is not until seven, 1:00?
Yes.
Yeah, if you could, thank you. Quite a night.
Did you want her?
No.
So we have an A and R for Ian Dolphin Trust, David and Deborah Ross on Bracket Hill Road. Good on you, but we're at least capable of getting on a normal table.
Yeah.
Please let you, let us know what you want to do.
Okay, basically, what we're doing is we're cutting off a piece of loss. Which is, and it's going to be combined with land and dolphin. And this piece right here, we're cutting off a land dolphin by loss. Both loans are going to be in the same area.
So I figured out how to do these sessions, but it's difficult to do this one. Right, twenty-five, this could be a distant shape, and it goes out to a four and a half acres of land. We can see that there's a big well under which sort of divides the land, it's raised to four acres. And this lot likewise has a big portion of the back of the building. So essentially, swapping one on land, but split off the lot. So that, yeah, this lot comes to the point now.
So if we draw this one out, it's really just doing that?
Exactly, exactly.
So it's going to be this lot?
Yes, absolutely.
It's hard to see it when you look at it.
Yeah, that's pretty much.
Any questions, Penny? Do we have?
They got tied to moan each other's pond, was it?
Uh, well, no, it can't even get over here yet. It's just they wanted to split the land.
Do we have any public comments on the A and R? Any public comments on the A and R for?
Well, that's a subdivision.
Yeah.
It's just the A and R, just on Bracket Hill Road. They just go through it once.
I make a motion, we accept this A and R?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can I just sign anything else?
No.
Is my my own, hold on my own? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'll be A and R for the mayor's, we all think that's about it. Any questions on the Blood Road A and R? Do we have a motion? Do we have a question? All in favor?
Sixteen.
So I don't. All right. So we have a couple more minutes. Did everybody? Did everybody read the, the policy on the public record because that we just, just because we're start, trying to start a binder of planning policies, we don't have many. Do we need, we really need one because doesn't all the requests go to the?
Public record holder?
Yes, let's try and have a public record holder. I guess technically, I mean, we talked about this before, but I mean, in reality, there's already so many guidelines. Right, but in reading it, I, because the selectmen have their own policy, not their own, but have a policy. And since the record keeper, the record holder, whatever people call that, is married. The only, the only difference that we have is that, that we will provide paper copies only because it's, um, multiple attorneys that I've talked to have said that doing it electronically is just a danger. Something may be left in there that's, that's, uh, something that's personal in nature and the idea that you're treating them, you can see the, you know, the trail of email that follow or anything else that, just to make sure, again, if you're, if you make, you know, not nice call, something that would hurt somebody's reputation that isn't important to the information request. That's the only, I think that's the reason why.
It's what you see to redact something that's, that's printed copy then electronic.
Yes.
I agree with that.
I'll make a motion to a folder.
All second to motion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Yes, sir. In the selectees, the district attorney? Okay, perfect. So we have a couple more minutes. Let's spend more minutes discussing the agenda format. So we changed our format up a little bit to, to add open forum. With the OML guidelines, you know, really changing and being more stringent, we all, if somebody came to our meeting and wanted to ask something, we just kind of let them do it, just because we were a little bit less formal, but just so we don't get in trouble with any sort of violation. And, you know, per the training, I know most of us went through the training. I think that we should add the open forum to it. I think we maybe need to put it, I hate to have it toward the end because I don't want anybody to wait. However, if it happens to be a lengthy subject, I don't want to make people wait for, you know, an hour or whatever. So just question on that, what does everybody think?
If we leave it as an open forum in the beginning, it's difficult to talk on anything that's in the open forum because it's not, we can briefly discuss it, but not in any depth. So it doesn't seem like that could go on forever or never. It looks like something that's, that's short of time. It would also help us stay on time for the rest of the people who were earlier on. I think, so that's.
I mean, I think when I look at most of them, and I went actually to a bunch of other towns to see what other people do, and it's usually at the front, and that was my, I mean, I just don't want, if somebody comes in here because they have an issue with whatever, they have a question or whatever, we really want to put weight on our pool.
Yeah, I mean, if we get it early and they can voice their opinion, then we can set up a separate meeting or a future meeting to discuss.
And normally, we don't have much, you know, normally, we have an empty room.
The only thing, if somebody really wants to say something, they can contact us and be put on the agenda at a specified time. And just saying that, I'm not a fan of the open forum, because it can go on and on. But since I left it for, that's why we have a board to make that decision. Just voice my opinion.
Yeah, I mean, I, I feel, yeah, I feel comfortable having it on there, just, just as a short, but, but nothing that can be drawn out. You need to make sure that it's, it's timely and not heavily discussed, otherwise it could just rat hole and take anything.
So we can have an unofficial kind of thing saying, you know, fifteen minutes is really there, we should max out on that. We can always, if it's up front, we can always continually to the back. If we, if there's twenty people and have twenty questions, and you say, all right, we'll give us a little bit of flexibility.
Sure, sure. Like I said, it's difficult. They answer questions without, without proper notice for the jury, etc. The open forum is for the people to speak to us, not necessarily for us to speak to them. They're into questions. That's the way it should be used.
So we do, do we, do we, we just only should have it, right? Because everybody's going to be able to do that.
I think so.
So we'll keep that, we'll have that, we'll have Jane just move it up top. And for the executive session stuff, what we learned was we need to have, we kind of always just left it there, which is something they have done since I've been on the board forever. And now, you just need to define specifically what the subject is. So we know that, and that's just going to be part of the. Any other? Good enough, then I'll just have Jane know that. Oh, it's seven forty. So we can open the continued, we can move to the public hearing for ZBT Energy Solutions on Brookfield Road.
So the last meeting we had presented the plan, it was some comments from Reeves and also Kurt, had some issues with the front end of lots. We did take care of that. We revised the plans. We've given them to Kurt. I don't know if Kurt gave anything, right? I did email him and he wrote back, "Looks good." That's all I got. And Mike's, Mike Andre had some comments that we did address, and he had follow-up comment on the culvert, which I addressed as well. He did have one more question regarding the two-thirds upland area. We do call out that the lots have the two-thirds upland, but he wants like a specific area of what the lots are. These lots are, you know, twenty-something acres in size. They don't have all the weapons flagged. But they're, you know, very confident that these lots all have at least three-quarters of an acre of upland. And, you know, we are certifying that there's two-thirds of a lot, so I don't know what thoughts on that. I think it's any other A and Rs that we've done, I mean, we don't give areas of, we just say that it meets the two-thirds upland requirement. I think that was the only, the only outstanding item.
We have a letter from Mike Andre dated February 19th. And Mike, I stated according to Mike's comment number four here, where Mike said that the plan still did not state the completed upland area provided on each proposed lot, but as Jay discussed, it's a very large lot and.
Yeah, we don't have that.
More than forty thousand.
I'll be attacking, okay?
Comment number five, Mike, this is in regard to the close cul-de-sac diameter where the plan shows one hundred and twenty feet and one hundred and forty-six feet is required. So Mike is suggesting a plan of a gentle reroute for the one hundred and twenty-foot radius, which I think is reasonable given the proposed use of this property. On the next page, on number fifteen, Mike seems to be fine with the levers that the applicant has requested, so he has no, um, any levers, um, to pick them up again. I think Mike is pretty satisfied that the plan meets the subdivision requirements, subject to this issue of the upland, not actually showing the amount of upland area. And since they're further large lots, it would be, you know, quite expensive to flag all the weapons to come up with an exact, you know, area of upland, which I don't think is really necessary in this particular case. Do you have anything to add here?
No, it's pretty much all.
No, I just agree, yeah, given, obviously, given what we spoke about over the past couple meetings and the, you know, the purpose for the subdivision, you know, hoping that you can stand at the road and see, obviously, on lot two on the McDougal piece, that there's quite a bit of upland area. We're confident and Jay is confident to certify that there's, it meets the requirements, but it's just a, it's a cost thing. We're trying to get away with not having to flag entire fifty acres or so to put that number, add that number on there, so.
How big is the smallest lot?
Uh, the smallest lot is twenty-one, this is six and a half. This lot is twelve and a half, this one's twenty-seven. I mean, the smallest one, the six and a half acre, this one has the entire, you know, half of the properties already has to be a solar lease on it. It's probably three or four acres of just solar panels. So that would be the smallest one. I'm talking three-quarters of an acre is the requirement.
Do we have any issues with the non-calculated? I mean, obviously, this is the, the subdivision for the, you know, for the frees, but.
The lots are large, huh? He's certifying it. For this purpose, I'm not sure it's necessary.
I agree.
Still anything else that we need to know?
No, just open up, okay?
More open?
Lori, did you ask them? Are you going to address the battery issue this evening or just the subdivision?
That would be on us.
What was the question?
Are you going to address the addition of the batteries to this project tonight? You were just.
It's not part of this, this project, this subdivision project.
Right, but last, at last meeting, he wanted you to be able to not open up a new site plan review and add the batteries? You were going to discuss.
I have, I have some additional information. Again, it's not part of this public hearing person, but I would like to actually present it if that's possible.
Is it on the agenda tonight?
I think last minute we discussed that after the subdivision.
Madam Chair, I think you're going to decide whether you wanted to start with a new site plan review.
Yeah, so that was the issue we just concluded.
Right, and I believe, we, didn't we, we scheduled for March, uh?
March sixth?
Sixth.
I don't think anything was scheduled.
No, it wasn't, we scheduled for.
I think what we, yeah, we mean that, we just talked with Kurt, I thought I was, my direction was to come back for this meeting with some material.
Yeah, I think the last meeting board was hoping to have us meet with Kurt to see what he had to say, when he basically sent something aboard, so.
I think you might want comment from Kurt regarding the batteries.
Yeah, he was reviewing the paperwork and the electrical stuff as well, the electrical stuff.
I'm sure.
Yes.
So I, I think if they submitted the material, that would be fine tonight. We can take that in and maybe schedule it for the sixth to talk about.
Yeah, I don't want, I don't think we should discuss it. We can't do anything to six.
Twenty?
And we haven't, Lori, do we have, when do we hear you for solar?
I sent an email that I haven't heard back. It just said to, um, you complete time for us.
That's my fault. Can we, I know, I know you guys had one more meeting, and are you?
Then we're going to hand it over.
When is that?
Next week. Tuesday night.
It would be very helpful before we deal with that piece, because I know that you sent information. I just haven't had a chance to detail, review that and, and talk. You, did you guys see, so Lori, on the, the solar moratorium committee, they have all this documentation they show us to help modify some of our guidelines, some of our zoning bylaws possibly. And I know that within that, with some of the, this information about those batteries, and it would be definitely, in everybody's best interest if we knew more about what we're talking about on if we were going to make decisions. So how does this work, like, how work out for the timing?
Well, we will have zoning amendments to schedule public hearings for. One of them, which would be the solar bylaw, and we've also talked about some other changes. So we should probably schedule a public hearing in April, um, so that we have enough time.
We're talking about more, if we're going to be looking and kind of making a decision on how we deal with the batteries here, shouldn't we have some information?
Okay, right, I thought.
Do you, do you kind of unstate what I'm trying to say as I babble here? You, you guys get it, right? They, they did all this research and have all this information.
If you're going to take that in consideration before you're going to.
Um, this might help, is I met with Kurt. What Ernie's proposing is accessory batteries. So we were going to consider limiting one container for every two megawatts of energy produced. And that, of course, would have to pass through you guys. And then the other part would be the large battery farms that are popping up. So I think what's happening, though, is if you have twenty solar arrays already in, you don't want to set precedents and let them all just willy-nilly throw the auxiliary batteries in. You want to be able to have a little control with the pads and, and the visual mitigation issues. And then the cooling units, how far are they from the homes? So if I could urge you to not just let them go and stick them out without maybe a quick sighting. And I know Ernie wanted to order them. There's no reason why you wouldn't allow a batteries because that's what they need, so he could go ahead and order them. I think that was your number one problem at the last meeting, so. And he, he needs three, so you're not holding him up, and you'd still be able to have a site, a quick site plan hearing on it.
I think it sounds good. Does that, what is the, what is the board thinking about this?
Yeah, just, if you don't mind, I just, so as far as, I think she's kind of hitting on it as well, so as far as whether or not they're allowed. We know that our zoning with this is frozen, so any additions or modifications to the bylaws specific to batteries won't be subject to this. So we understand that they're allowed here. What we're trying to just make sure we do the right way is whatever procedure we need to make sure that the planning board knows that and is approving, and we can prove to a financial lender or a partner that we have permission.
that we have permission from the planning board to do this. That's what we're after. So the projects are under construction right now. We're procuring materials and we're hoping to understand in whatever path we're led down, whether it's handled as a field change and caught in the building permit and the electrical permit sets, which is kind of the path we had been going up until last meeting. Or we have to open up a public hearing. We're just trying to get that direction as soon as we can so we can move forward in a timely manner. And March, at the end of March is, you know, obviously another month and a half away. So I was hoping tonight I could explain enough for you to make that decision, how you wanted to handle that at least, and go from there. You know, I know there's a meeting between there. Is it because it's full that...
Yeah, March sixth is going to be a very full meeting.
Can the, can the planning board make a change to the site plan without opening up a public hearing?
What we've done in the past is treated them as field changes. So that if they're minor changes and if Mike feels it's not significant, I can authorize, you know, a minor correction to the plan. If we're not sure, we bring it to the board and ask for your guidance. We did that at the last meeting for the Carpenton Road Battery where the board decided that it would be permissible provided the one or whatever would be affected.
That wasn't for the battery, that was for the connections to the, that was for the connecting equipment.
It was the battery.
The battery was already there. That had already been approved in the site plan. Those are the connections.
So the board can always direct that way without actually opening up a modification of a, for a public hearing.
And I guess the biggest concern would be the screenings or anything else that was...
Yeah, I mean, it's more of a sighting than it allows you to. So I'd like to have the board have the authority to at least look at the sighting and approve the sighting in size. We can make sure that it's not interfering with the...
It's just reasonable, I mean, in reality.
That's reasonable.
It was just a timing issue that they want to, I mean, but, I mean, unless we, unless we think we could do that quickly on the sixth.
I don't think I would stake that long, but, but we've got a pretty busy night.
Right, what, what if, if, if Bill works with you guys and maybe even... Lori, you want to take a little look at it here now? I'm just, I'm just saying, I just, I'm just trying to make this as simple as possible. If, if you guys can all get everything just really for us to say, all right, it looks good and we can do it in five minutes and that's absolutely...
Propose some shielding, get it on the drawings and...
Yeah. Yeah, okay. The ping goes, the box itself is no higher than the panels are. They look different, you know, they do. So we're open to screening that section where it would be, where the battery would be located.
It's already behind the...
I have, yeah, I have a handful of information that I was going to, I have some pictures of them as well that I was going to show tonight. I don't know if that's possible.
So can, let me have them, leave some pictures? I'm just trying to speak this, so you can leave so we can look at some pictures. And you guys work as kind of a field adjustment and just let us give us your okay. If, if, do everything very, very, very well. So on March sixth, it literally takes us under ten minutes. So it's... Is everybody go with that? Do we have to vote on this?
And I think the fire chief may also want to weigh in on accessibility to get to it because they do get hot and there's some HVAC equipment attached. So as long as that access road that the fire department feels that they can get in there or around or...
Just to, just to answer, just to give some color to that as well. These locations are the same approved locations as the original equipment pads. So that was part of the whole design process with the fire chief is to make sure that he had access for... Before there was batteries shown specifically there, they wanted to make sure they had access to get to there for emergency.
Bill, will you just get an okay email from fire?
Sure.
Just let them know that it's not going to be batteries so that they know what they're dealing with.
We've submitted all what we'll pass out tonight has gone to the wiring inspector, building inspector, fire chief. They have all that stuff.
Okay, great. If we just get their, if we just get all their approvals, because I know we talked about this last... If everybody's happy and then it, and it looks good, then we'll be happy too. So you guys have ten minutes on March sixth if we can vote on giving them, adding them to the agenda.
Make a motion, we add them to the agenda for March sixth?
Second.
On favor?
I think someone to close this.
Yeah, but I just, just we...
I make a motion, we approve the subdivision plan. So we can help still... Anybody want to talk on that? Who else? Make a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Make a motion, we approve the subdivision plan in session?
Second.
On favor?
I agree with the waivers.
With the waivers and the standard conditions, waivers.
Is there more to this paper?
There's pictures, specs, information.
Okay, great.
I think it's the same stuff that I gave you.
Exactly.
Is it sixty-one? Is one sixty-one in?
How big is it sixty-one, Greg?
This property?
Yes.
Yes, the areas for the solar arrays have been removed, but there's still some existing land that the landlord has enrolled in chat.
Standard conditions stuff, but we should... Thank you very much. We have the continued public hearing on TJ Solar. That pillar LLC discharges subdivision plan, property holders.
We have a letter from Mike Andrew today on this topic.
Okay, all right. Well, basically, we had a bunch of comments from the Braves engineer. We reviewed, we revised the grading. It was inside the cul-de-sac. We moved it outside, a one-to-one slope. And we're going to have stabilization on it for front stoop. And then we also added a guard rail around the cul-de-sac. That was another one of the comments that we addressed. The only one we didn't address was for the detention basin. And we are going to do test pits prior to construction as part of the approval.
So in Mike's letter dated today, there are a couple of issues. Comment number two regarding both K-values in regard to the vertical curve. I believe Mike was comfortable with a waiver that would be appropriate for that K-value. The next page, comment fifteen, as Erin mentioned, they are proposing a one-to-one slope to be stabilized with rip raft. At the end of that letter, you see an email from Mike regarding that one-to-one waiver. He believes that the way it's being treated is sufficient and that it would be a reasonable fee to grant a waiver for that one-to-one slope rather than the normally required three-to-one slope. And then comment sixteen B, which is the one that Erin mentioned regarding the detention basin. It doesn't quite conform to stormwater standards, but Mike's comment is that we could put in a condition to either require that the applicant conduct test pits or lower the pipe as a condition of approval. And he would be fine with, he'll propose that as a condition of the plan. And then comment twenty-one is related to common sixteen B. And essentially it's saying that a waiver for the detention basin by requiring either test pits or lowering the pipe would satisfy his concern.
Anyone have questions?
So if we look at comment number fifteen, the original grade was a one-to-one slope. And it was changed to a three-to-one slope. And before it was changed, it was not recommended that that waiver be given. And it now looks like it's back to a one-to-one slope. So is it still not recommended that that waiver is given or is he...
If you look at the comment, he has an email on the other side.
Okay.
So the board has revised the plan to show a rip raft. One-to-one slope with a guard rail on the cul-de-sac. So you don't have to grant the waiver. Obviously, that's a good discretion if you don't feel comfortable with it. You could either, you know, not grant that waiver and, you know, approve the plan that way or ask that the applicant revise the plan before you approve it with the three-to-one slope.
The access road, you know, the access road.
Oh, oh, yeah, we added that too. Frank added an access road to the detention basin.
Did Mike get a chance to see the access road that was in that part of the comment?
That was on the plan that you suggested.
Yes, yeah.
Yes.
And we added a detail too, for the rip raft slope, the side, the fiddle, fiddle, one-to-one slope.
So again, you could either, you know, grant the waiver and accept the plan as prepared or not grant the waiver and ask that the plan be revised either prior to voting on the plan or waiting to see it before you vote on the plan.
What do, what does the board think about, I mean, Mike said, well, I would always prefer three-to-one. I mean, it's, I mean, it's really how our discretion, how we feel. Cool videos?
It is outside the right of way.
And we also, you know, know the purpose of this plan is really...
It's just a solar, so...
Probably whenever we build that's presented.
Well, when there's a clear, when we, we know clearly what the subdivision is being used for, it's much easier to make decisions and give waivers for things. So...
And Mike DeRis seems to have that big of a problem with it.
So I don't have a problem with that.
So the plans there, latest plans, it has the rip raft shown and everything?
Mm-hmm. Yep, yeah, we have it in our details. We call it out somewhere as it's one-to-one slope.
Do we have any comments in the public on this? We're all looking at you.
Make a motion, we close the public hearing?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Do we have a lot to do?
I'd like to make most, we approve the plan with the waiver on the one-to-one rip raft slope outside the right of way and that the applicant conduct test pits when the one that's feasible. And if any adjustment needs to be made to meet the master D P's stormwater standards, they be adjusted in field with the approval of Mike.
Do we have a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So do you have some...
So, um, that is something... Not, nothing at all. Right, we have the issue with the site plan with the downman one sixty-nine with Henry.
The left?
Yeah, it is in this one, right? They had the, this is not one sixty-nine, this is...
Yes.
Yes, it is. Can you, wait, don't leave it just yet.
Yes, it is similar.
You can go back for one second.
This isn't, no, this isn't the one that goes down.
This is the one one sixty-nine, it is.
That was a different one.
Yes, it will allow that Carpenton Road solar projects to...
Okay, so that's, okay, so this is the, this is the subdivision plan.
Yes.
The site plan is what we looked at last week.
Yes.
Okay.
Has anything been done on that?
Yes, in fact, I had an email from David Albrecht from the Regal today. They have run out and state the full locations and the pad locations. And they want to keep contacting the owner directly to take a look at that and get his feedback.
Please let your family talk about you.
Okay.
That's definitely where you're working at.
We don't want to talk right now. Thank you. Okay, so we have, I mean, nine minutes behind, that's pretty good. The green girl, gold group discussion?
Don't mind if I sit. I was on my feet for like twelve hours today, so, eleven hours.
Don't exaggerate.
Yeah, only eleven, only eleven. Yeah, so thank you all so much for having me here this evening. It's a pleasure to see some familiar faces again and had a pleasure to see some of you up in North Murfield for the tour we gave of our facility up there. And be more than happy for those who weren't able to attend to have the rest of you come up and take a look at it anytime. So to give you a bit of an update on where we stand with Charlton and where everything's going with Charlton, let me first start off with two state administrative issues that we just recently got cleared up. Number one was with D E P. Jim was nice enough to let us know that we will most likely be declared a public water supply there. So, you know, we didn't really think that we would be a public water supply since we just have restaurants open to the public. And then it's a, you know, a Culligan cooler in the break room and a Culligan cooler in the waiting area. So you figure, don't drink any water around public water source, but we are. People washing their hands in the restroom, they can wash their face and, you know, that type of thing. They did tell us that they've seen people cram some water bottles into some pretty inventive areas to fill up water. So wanted to make sure we were good with that. So in talking with D E P, they're going to give us a, or I think they've already given us a mandatory hookup order. And we've been talking with Water Commission and Paul Borey about that. I think he's going to make the announcement on the twenty-fifth that we have that mandatory hookup order. Until then, what they've said is if we put up signs, you know, no potable water, do not drink the water and have bottled water available, that they'll let us do that until we get the hookup done. And then once we get the hookup done, it'll just be, you know, clean tested water coming in from, thank God, our side of the road. Because we were really worried about, after we heard some horror stories about after pour under and robots and all this type of stuff, it's on our side of the road. It made everything a lot better. So that's the water issue. That one's been squared away. Second major one was the curb cut with Worcester DOT. So we've been talking with Chris Chambers. He's been our site plan rep over there. Finally, after a couple of months, we've come to a solution that makes everybody happy. And it's going to be, we were always willing to close down the curb cut. We just didn't want to have to completely close it, reopen... have turned into the lot, right where you hear every truck coming up the hill, start slamming on the gas to make it up the hill, and then they would have slammed on the brakes for people who were trying to make this steep turn down. We spoke to Jason and a few guys over at the fire department, and they had some worries. They didn't, nothing ever came out of it officially, but they were sort of apprehensive, shall we say, about emergency access. But then when we came to the new plan with D O T, it became a moot issue, so we didn't have to get any sort of like official opinion or anything like that. The new plan for curb cut is it's going to be, and this is what D O T came back with, entrance only off of Route 20 and exit off of Route 31. And we'll make sure in all of our marketing promotional materials, we make people well aware of that, and we have, you know, directions of how to get to the site, everything else. Have some internal signage on the lot, you know, turning arrows, little signs, enter only, exit only, those types of things, direct people through the lot. And we told Kurt, Danny Dowd, that we'd work with them to make sure that those get put into the right locations, that they're, you know, visible without being too visible, and that they're directing people to where they really need to go. The long curb cut on 20 was sort of what was sticking in everyone's craw. So what we're going to do with that is stripe it off with some paint, close it down to a more reasonable size. I think it's like a, like a 55-foot curb cut or something crazy like that. We're going to close it down to whatever the standard spec size is. I told Jason that I'd work with him and at the to make sure that even with the close down, they still have the right access they need for all their vehicles. I don't think it'll be any problem. We'll just, I mean, at the end of the day, we can just tell them, you know, pull a truck in the lot and we'll stop the stripes right where your turning radius stops, or something like that. And then to make sure that people don't just drive over the stripes, we're going to put some concrete planters in there and have it blocked off with some concrete planters. So that squares away D O T. They sent their change orders. We hired McClure and W S P to respond to all the stuff. They said, you know, no problem, very routine, and should have that all cleared up in the next, probably two weeks or so is what we're hoping. They do want us to put a granite curb in and continue the granite curb from where it goes up to our curb cut. We're just going to talk to them and say, can we do that in the, in the spring when the ground thaws a little bit? Because otherwise, it's going to be an insane cost to get out there and thaw the ground and do everything else. And it's, it's an aesthetic thing. We want to have it, but it's a minor aesthetic thing.
Well, the curb cut helps with the snow plowing.
Exactly.
If you don't have that, the granite, then it, it breaks apart, right, when it's snow plowing.
Oh, yeah, yeah. If you have the asphalt.
It's an investment that's, you know.
And we're more than happy to do it. We just don't want to have to pour the paraffin on the ground to thaw it and anything like that before we start digging. So, you know, that clears up everything with D O T and D E P. Just more sort of updates of where we are in this process. Buildout there is now fully complete. We're just waiting to do the final inspections and everything in it, but the security system's up and running, the internet's up and running, the TVs are hooked up, and, you know, it's, the only thing that's not in there right now is the furniture, because we wanted to wait until after the inspection so we don't have to move chairs out of the way and that type of stuff. We started our hiring process. So far, we've hired 10 Charlton, no, I'm sorry, we've hired 10 people to work in the shop, and I believe eight of them are Charlton residents. And then we're opening that up for probably another hiring class of 10, just to make sure we have coverage and have a little bit, you know, more people working there. You know, as part of our HCA, but also something we're really proud to do is really focus our hiring through Charlton. So for our first initial hiring, we did a job fair up at the library. It was absolutely fantastic. We had about 75 people turn out for that. Really got some very, very good candidates. And then since then, we've been posting on Indeed for our job postings, but you can geotag which towns and which areas you want your posting to appear in. So we've been limiting it to Charlton, Northbrook Field, and Spencer, which is our closest. The Cannabis Control Commission defined, I believe, 20 communities of disproportionate impact, and those were communities where the arrest and conviction rate for marijuana was above the norm based on population size. Spencer was one of those communities. So we're very proud to reach out to a traditionally disaffected community and be able to include them in our hiring process and really make that a good part of it. The people we've been getting from Charlton have been absolutely phenomenal, absolutely fantastic. We've had them up to Northbrook Field for an initial day of training. Half the day was walking through the POS systems, and just when they thought it couldn't get any more dry, the second half of the day was a compliance seminar with me. So we went over general marijuana law and policy in the Commonwealth. Who are the regulators at every face you're going to see, from the Cannabis Commission all the way down to Jim? And so, you know, you're going to see Jim way more than you see any of the commissioners, making sure they sort of understand what the general timeline and laws are in the Commonwealth. We've been from decriminalization to medical marijuana to adult use marijuana, and now we're looking at even expanding adult use marijuana. They've discussed doing the home delivery and the cafes and a lot of pretty novel license types here. So we've gone from being, you know, at the forefront with decriminalization. Our medical program was, you know, right in line with some others. We missed being the first ones to have an adult use program. Colorado got that one from us, but I think we did a little bit better. And now we're looking to take in that leadership position again with some of these more novel license types. So it's great to be in a state that's so progressive with the policy, and it's great to be working under that policy. You know, the other, and then, you know, more of what we trained the people on, I'm trying to think. We started very, very basic. What are, you know, the types of cannabis that will have? Flower cannabis, prepared extracted cannabis, infused cannabis products, ingestibles like an edible or something like that, and then the topicals, the creams and ointments and those types of things. So what generally will we, what, you know, not what SKUs will we have, but what product categories will we have? What safe use of those, safe dosage, effective dosage, safe storage and disposal? For disposal, we say just bring it back to us and we'll get rid of it for you for free. You know, how do you store it in the house? Do you store it in a lockbox out of the reach of children? You don't use it in the presence of children? And you make sure that for the next four hours, you're not expected to operate any heavy machinery or anything like that. So I'm just sort of building those in. We started training them in two of our major policies. Number one is start low, go slow, which means use the least amount of cannabis possible to feel the effects you need to have, fully comprehend and understand those effects, and then use that to make a more informed decision the next time you use cannabis. Because the way we look at it is start low, go slow. If it's not enough, you can always add a little bit more, but it's really hard if you add too much to walk that back. So we encourage people, you know, baby steps as they're entering into it. The other thing that we really worked on, that we really, really started focusing on is going to be a point of each of our training sessions, is anti-diversion lessons. So diversion, the Cannabis Control Commission defines as any transfer of marijuana outside of the seed to sale tracking system, that serial number, UPC-based tracking system of all plants. And we really want to just hammer that home as every part of it. So the first anti-diversion lesson we had was about possession limits, because if you possess something above the possession limits, you're now outside the system. So we wanted to make sure everyone knew what you can possess and the different ratios that you can possess. It's an ounce of flower cannabis, or five grams of the oil, or 500 milligrams of the edibles. And then there's different ratios of equivalencies between those, so everyone got to do some fun flashcards of if you want to get one gram of oil and two grams of flour in this cookie and that, you know, how does this all fit into the matrix? But it's getting people interested and involved. And I'm trying to think of where else we've gone from there. A few things that we're working on, working with Kurt on the sign. We have that out with our designers now. We're working on a few, really what we kind of keep going back and forth on is are we going to do a panel sign with the letters, or are we going to do individual letters? Each kind of have their advantages and disadvantages. It's, at this point, it's really more of an aesthetic thing than anything else. But Kurt's been great with us working on that. We've had our architect get some renderings drawn up, one for the letters and one for the panel, and when we decide which one we're going to do, we'll get that over to him. But he's been great in letting us know, you know, based off our dimensionality and based off the rules, how big a sign we can have, you know, where we can locate it, all those types of things. Pat, the van, we're getting inspected, actually, the van and Charlton. We filed the paperwork for both of those last week for the state inspections to come out, so they'll come out and they'll do a full walkthrough of Charlton, make sure everything there is in accord and everything there squared away. They're also going to check out our transport van, which I think, well, Matt, you may have seen that up in Northbrook Field. I don't know if we had it yet or not. So they're going to come and check that out as well.
Could you explain what that, what that's all about?
Oh, sure. So the transport van is the way we transport the cannabis from Northbrook Field down here to Charlton. So it's a, it's an unmarked white van, and it looks the same as any tradesman's van that you would see driving up and down the roads. There's absolutely no indication that there's cannabis inside the vehicle. The vehicle itself has two people in it at all times, a driver and a runner, who's the one who actually gets out and moves back and forth. We've been hiring out of former law enforcement for those positions, because we figure, who knows, secure driving, transportation, and security better than the cops. And a lot of cops, you know, are retired and looking for something to do, so it's a great way to get them in and get them involved and make sure that we have, you know, top flight people that are running our operation. The van itself is fully armored. It's, the windows and the panels all fully armored. It's GPS tracked, it's video tracked. It has a security system that texts, it texts me, actually, if it ever goes above 55 miles an hour, if it goes off on a prescribed GPS routes, if it makes an unscheduled stop, really anything it does out of the ordinary. I found that out, one of the guys in our facility, unfortunately, in the last storm, he crashed his car. So since the van hasn't been approved yet, it's just a van we own, we said, well, you can borrow the van for the night and go drive it home. There's no cannabis in it, it's just an empty white van at this point. And I got all the texts when he got up on the pipe, over 55, over 55, over 55. It was, it was blowing up. So I had a little chat with him the next day, but more responsible driving. And he's not going to be one of our drivers. So the way it works is the back of the van, which has an access panel to go to the front, locking door to go to the front, I should say, it's got some pretty cool stuff. I don't want to get too deep into it. It's got some pretty cool security systems. If you are not the person who has the right key, out of all the keys on the chain, but if you're not the person who has the right key, putting it in in the right order and doing a pretty cool combination of pressing buttons and flipping levers and switches, the engine immobilizes until it's remotely turned back on again. So we're pretty secure in how we're going to be able to keep all of this under control. The back of the van is where the actual product's stored. We have a steel cage there that's bolted to the frame of the vehicle, top and bottom, or it's bolted to the frame on the bottom, runs all the way up to the roof, and then it has individual locking components within there, within each of those sort of, it actually looks a lot like the shuffleboard, with like four boxes that we can get into. And then when you can get into that box, that's where you can put in the metal footlocker that actually contains the cannabis product, its own GPS tracker, a tamper tag to make sure no one's messed with it in transit or anything like that. The van takes one of six randomized routes between Northbrook Field and Charlton. Deliveries are done at randomized times. What we're going to do our deliveries in is, I'll tell you guys some private later, but we have, we have a plan so that it won't affect regular business operations of how we're going to do all those deliveries. I'm trying to be cognizant that it's on TV. But we've got a good solid plan for that, and I've ran it past Lieutenant Dowd and a few other guys in the police department, and they're, they're okay with it. And then, you know, at the end of the day, if there's any waste product, returned product, you know, a large amount of excess product, anything like that, we have the ability to pick it up and bring it back to Northbrook Field if there's the, you know, need requirement to do so, anything like that. So, you know, we filed that paperwork last week to get the state out here to come inspect. Cannabis commission's in Worcester now, so it's a lot shorter commute for them. They took some office space on top of Union Station. And First State Agency headquartered in Worcester, and we've messaged them to see. So great to have them this close. So we'll get them out, we'll have them do the inspection. We've had them out a few times already for soft inspections and walkthroughs, and we've been working with the same compliance officers we've been working with throughout the life of this project. So we're confident that what we have there is going to pass muster, it's just getting that final stamp of approval. So what we're planning to do is they're going to, the way the process works now has changed a little bit from the way it used to be under the pure medical system, now that it's a medical and recreational blended system. The way it used to work was you got your provisional certificate, which we have, then you got your architectural review passed, and then, you know, as basically as they were leaving from the architectural review, they'd give you your final certificate two or three days later, and as soon as you have the final certificate in hand, tap it to the wall and start making sales. The way it works now is PCR, which we're in, then you have the architectural review approval, so that's all still the same. Then you get your final certificate, which means you've passed all your inspections. But it's not really final, because they come out and do one last inspection that they call the sales ready. And when you pass the sales ready, three days later, you're then allowed to open the doors and start selling product. So that's sort of the new system. It's, it's not much different, but it's a little more staggered. They added that sort of sales ready stage. So what we're going to be doing is in between, you know, when we know that we're going to pass the architectural review, we're just waiting for F C R, we're going to bring everyone in from Charlton, get them trained. We want to have them there for at least a week ahead of time, getting trained, walking through mock transactions. We invite all you guys to come down and participate in the mock transaction. We're going to need some bodies in there. And, you know, just make sure that everyone's very comfortable with the products that we have on hand, the safety requirements, what we have on hand, what the regulations are, both the municipal and state regulations are, and also get them trained in, you know, basic retail, cash handling techniques, general customer service, you know, record keeping, things like that. What we've been very lucky is we've been able to hire out of two large talent pools. One is the people with a healthcare background. We're going to target those people as our patient care advocates. They're going to be more on the medical side of the fence. And then people who have good retail backgrounds are going to be our client care specialists, and they're going to be focused a little more on the recreational side of the fence. When I say side of the fence, the way it works in the state is that end would be recreational, this end would be medical, it's different POS systems, and then you have a velvet rope that separates one from the other. The medical side is on tax, and the medical side, you can have a little bit higher potency edibles. On the recreational side, edibles are five milligrams per serving. Five milligrams, we don't have this yet in Massachusetts, but I was just in Colorado, and it's all over Colorado. Five milligrams roughly equivalent intoxication level to about two glasses of wine. On the medical side, you have some people bad PTSD, insomnia, you know, chronic pain conditions, they really need a high dose edible. And what the state said is if we limit it to five milligrams on the medical side, in addition to fibromyalgia, these people are also going to have diabetes, 75 gummies a night. So let's allow, you know, a higher dose gummy that's restricted just for medical cardholders that have the need and requirement for it. That'll be over on our medical side. On our recreational side, that'll be, you know, our standard suite of products. What we've had there, and those kitchens are a lot farther along now than the last time you guys saw them, had to jump over the pits. We're getting the floors poured, or the floors are poured, we're getting the epoxy poured, I think, tomorrow. We're going to be offering at first, it's just going to be flower, and then going forward from there, we're going to have all of what's called the MIPS, which are the oils, edibles, infusions, anything that's not just pure flower. It's just on our side, really, it's just getting those systems up and running. So we should have those very, very shortly afterwards, but we'll probably be opening as flower only for, you know, a week or so, and then get the rest up and running in there. Everything on the recreational side, as well as on the medical side, is packaged in opaque, child-resistant packaging. We've been working with packaging companies across the country to figure out what's going to be the best, the most cost-effective, the most safe, and also be something that's aesthetically pleasing. We want it to look nice. We really view Charlton as being the showroom for Green Gold, and this is where people from all over the Commonwealth can come, become familiar with the Green Gold brand, become familiar with the products we have. We're going to be wholesaling to a lot of locations in their home areas, but this is where, like an Apple Store, you can really come in and get the curated service and see what's going on. And that's really the aesthetic we've tried to take in the store. So it's a lot of LED, a lot of glass, a lot of white marble, a lot of synthetic material, because we really wanted to go for that Apple Store vibe.
Is this your only retail location?
For the time being, this is your only retail location. We're looking at one in Eastern Massachusetts and one in Western, but we wanted to start central and branch out from there. So I'm trying to think of what else we have going on. Oh, the patient education materials are getting printed up. So that is, everyone who comes into the shop gets a copy of the patient education materials. If you've been there once or you've been there 1,000 times, you still get a copy. And it's about a 20-page document. It has information on cannabis, information on safe use of cannabis, suggestive dosaging, safe storage, all the stuff that we go over in our presentations, but it's there in writing. And then one of the biggest things we have in there is a acknowledgement, we call it the acknowledgement, and it's basically a punch list of here are Charlton municipal bylaws regarding use, consumption, possession of cannabis. Here are state laws regarding use, possession, consumption of cannabis, initial next to each of them, and that way we can make sure that we have proof positive, when you left the facility, you knew what the rules were and you said you'd play by the rules. If you don't play by the rules, if we get, if we get a phone call from Lieutenant Dowd or someone else that someone's been a bit of a knucklehead, what we have is what's called the unfit purchaser registry. It's very similar to what liquor stores have, you know, a kind of colloquial term for it is blackball book. And what it is, is if we determine that someone's an unfit purchaser, for whatever reason, their ID is expired or invalid, they've tried to purchase above the limits, they, you know, Charlton Highway Department found a wrapper on the side of the road that had their name identifying it on. Whatever the issue may be, if someone's not playing by the rules, we have the ability to identify that individual and then bar them from our POS system. So if the person comes in and tries to present their ID to our gate check, it's going to flash a red flag and we're going to say, you know, thank you so much, we're not going to be able to serve you today, and whether it's a, hey, this person's ID was expired, and, you know, check back with them in a week when they get a new copy, we'll say, we'd be more than happy to work with you after you've had a chance to get to the R M V. If it's, hey, this person- And whether it's a, hey, this person's ID was expired and, you know, check back with them in a week when they get a new copy, we'll say, we'd be more than happy to work with you after you've had a chance to get to the RMV. If it's, hey, this person, you know, had a more serious offense, we can say, you know, we're not going to be able to have a business relationship with you. Thank you so much, and see you then. So we have that ability to track. We have that ability to make sure people are playing by the rules. And that's really the biggest thing. Everyone who's an employee there goes through a two-and-a-half-hour responsible vendor program that's a state-mandated curriculum that covers soup to nuts, all the training. And then, we do those internal sort of compliance seminars and then we'll have that week of on-the-job training as well. So by the time we open the doors, everyone's going to be sort of old hat with what they're doing, very, very comfortable in those roles. We'll have a couple of security guards on at all times. We'll have the patient care advocates, the client care specialists. We'll have a breeder who's there to make sure, you know, the breeder will be a more warm and fuzzy-looking security guard who's still trained in the ID verification, ID approval, everything like that, to make sure when people come in that we check the ID to make sure that they're good to go. And then they're allowed into the waiting room. And from there, they meet with their specialists who then can walk them through the process.
Question. This is all for the medical marijuana?
It's really for both.
When you open up, will it be medical only?
When we open, it'll be medical. And then about five to six weeks after that, it should convert over to recreational.
Okay. You cannot right now do that.
How so?
Without coming back to the planning board. You were granted for medical marijuana only, not recreational without use.
All right, I'd have to see a copy of the decision because what I believe was, we were approved for all licensed types of marijuana, anything we had a permit for.
I remember the discussions.
Yeah.
And it was specified that if you wanted open detail there, you had to come back.
Right, we'd come back and notify.
And notify and go for cycle approval because we approved medical because of the business, the size of the parking lot and things like that was completely different than what potentially is recreational.
So when
Your customer count was much lower for medicinal than it was for recreational, so.
No, so all of our traffic studies took that into account. And you said, this is what we, I have the Fort Hill study. So what we had said was...
File a request for modification.
Yeah, I watched the video of this the other day.
Yeah. So we'd be happy to, yeah, we'd be happy to file a modification. I just didn't want to have to go through a whole new refiling again and everything like that.
I mean, of course, I mean, I would, I mean, I'm not overreaching. I think the biggest concern will be the traffic. And I think that's
Oh, so let me speak for a moment on our traffic plan. And hopefully, that can sort of address some of these issues. So understand, everyone, we've all seen Lester. We've all seen some of the issues they've had there. We've all seen how that started off a little bumpy. But when I drove past, both this morning and this evening, settled down, there were about twenty cars in the lot or so. That was about ten AM. And again, coming back here at about six-thirty or so.
Is that their off-site lot or their?
The off-site lot, yeah, the main Holden parking lot. I don't think they allow anyone to park in front of the building. Maybe some medical patients. So what our parking plan is, we're going to do something very similar to that. If, if and when by the time we open, there's still the demand for parking and there's still the demand for these sites, which we see as every single one of them opens, it dissipates more and more and more. Good Chem will be approved tomorrow for FCR in Worcester. So between them and Lester, that should really dissipate a lot of this and we'll see more and more of that starting to come through. What we're going to do for parking, when we open for medical, it'll be parking on-site because that's sort of what we've always had in mind, park in the front. And if we need to, we have those overfill and overspill lots in the back. We're going to block two of those off for the existing tenants and then the rest will be, you know, open for anyone who wants to, who wants to park there. There's an office tenant in that building now.
Is that part of the state site?
Yeah. We, yeah, we own both those buildings and that whole corner. And then some of the woods back there as well, too. I think it's like three-ish acres or so. And at some point, we'll probably be coming in for an A and R because the lot line actually cuts right through the middle of the dispensary building. So it just doesn't make sense to have a lot line that goes through a building. So, but that's phase twelve. So what we're doing for parking is, medical is just going to be park on-site. We're going to make sure we have the directional signs, park on-site. You know, everyone knows where to park on the recreational side. We've been speaking with a few large lot owners in town who have either existing parking spaces or open lots that we could use for parking. And what we're going to do is, if there's still the demand and we, you know, at least for the opening weekend, we think there probably will be. But if there's still that high level of demand, we're going to be doing shuttle bussing. And what we'll do is, in the front lot that has those, I believe it's like thirteen spots, those are going to be reserved for medical patients. We want to make sure that medical patients always have priority access. We want to make sure that medical patients also, a lot of them may have mobility issues, issues like that. We don't want them to have to go to shuttle buses and, you know, traipse all the way down. Massachusetts does not recognize any reciprocity for out-of-state medical patients, so they're not medical patients here. But if someone does have an out-of-state medical card, we're going to let them park in that front lot because, just because they live in Connecticut doesn't mean, you know, they may have any less mobility issues than someone who lives in Massachusetts. So we'll let them park in that front lot. That'll be reserved for that. The plan is for those other lots, they're down Route 20. And what we're looking at is shuttle bussing with a ticket system. So you park in the lot, and when you park, you get a ticket. You then show that ticket to get on the shuttle bus, and that's the only way you're allowed on the bus. You have to park in one of our prescribed lots to then get on the bus. The bus will go on a route that I've already talked to, Tambrin up at the overlook, and figured out a way that we're going to route the traffic to avoid any, you know, sort of interference of the overlook or anything they have going on there. And they were okay with that plan. And then we'll come into that back lot where no one will be allowed to park if we're doing shuttle bussing. We'll come into that back lot, drop off. People can queue up coming along the back lot. And there's a little sidewalk that we've added between the two buildings. Queue up coming along the back so that way you don't have people milling in the parking lot or standing on the street, anything like that. And then they're going to have to present that ticket again to get into the shop. So that way, we can guarantee people don't go park at Ted's or, you know, somewhere like that and just walk right up and hop in the line. You're going to need that ticket at each phase of the process. So actually, we'll probably have significantly less on-site traffic when we open for recreational because of the shuttle bussing than we would for medical when we just have people coming in and parking in the spots and walking into the store like a, you know, shoe store type of thing. So the leases that we've been negotiating for those off-site lots, we've been doing three- and six-month terms. So we think that's about how long it's going to take for that. Spoke with Jim and said, you know, one of the big things we want to do in those satellite lots, if we do end up doing those, is make sure that we, because we're going to have a large captive audience there, we want to make sure we feature some Charlton businesses. So if the restaurants want to come down and set up, you know, a food stall, work out a way with Jim to make sure that that happens. You know, a hundred people waiting in line, he's selling some places pizza. We also want to make sure we're working with Jim that there'd be some ortojons there, that there'd be some of those pop-up canopy tents. And he said that he would help sort all that out and help us get that all figured out. Spoke with Jason, if we need any sort of emergency services, you know, anything like that, that we make sure they're aware. And then spoke to Lieutenant Dowd and said, you know, if we need to do some traffic control, can we ask you guys for help with that, anything like that? And he said, no problem. But that's, that's our plan for traffic management, traffic control. It's very, very similar to what they're doing down at, I think both Insa and East Hampton and Veralife down in Wareham are doing a similar shuttle bus and ticketing system. They've had absolutely no issues with traffic. There's a reason no one's seen them in the paper. So that's really our best plan, be very proactive about it, have a way to get people on and off-site without them having to make individual trips. And then by the time, you know, that, that's up and running, when I was back in Colorado last week, it's like package stores out there. You see a facility like this in every town. And we're going to see that here in Massachusetts within the next twelve months. So it just, by sort of law of averages, that glut of traffic is going to dissipate. What I always sort of compare it to is, if we only had two package stores in Massachusetts, imagine what a line would be for those package stores. But now imagine you only had two package stores east of the Mississippi and imagine what the lines for those would be like. So we're seeing the worst of the worst of the worst of the worst traffic. And I think honestly, that's behind us now. And now it's sort of saying, we know what the demand is. We know what's coming forward. How can we actively manage this? So that's our best plan for traffic management moving forward. Be proactive, get some shuttle bussing in there if need be. But keep a weather eye on what all the other facilities are doing so we can get sort of real-time numbers as to what we would expect. But I think last time, when we pulled those traffic study numbers, we did them looking at co-located medical and recreational facilities in suburban Denver, which we felt was sort of the most similar to what this would be. That's where we got, I think it was something about a hundred and fifty visits a day. I still think that number is going to hold steady as a steady state number. It's just sort of that initial hiccup. And I don't want to have to, you know, build out for an initial hiccup that's going to last for a month. That's why I think the shuttle bussing is a much more effective way to do it because that's as flexible as we need it to be. If we need another lot, it's another couple thousand bucks to grab another lease. If we don't, then some guys make some good money for leaving a field full of dirt and everyone's happy on their end, too. So that's really our, the best thing we've come up with, yeah, I should say.
And what timeframe are you looking at that you're going to go to get medical opening?
We're thinking that will probably open within the next month. So, yeah, we're looking to get that open fairly quickly because we are, we've got people, we've got building, we've got products, we just need permits. We have the provisional permit, we just need that final signature.
And when do you think it'll be coming back?
I guess as soon as possible because we don't want to have any holdup in our rollout of...
Well, okay, if you open the medical like next month, how long after that would you anticipate?
Oh, I think it'd be about five or six weeks after we open it. Because the biggest thing we have is, it's the state. By statute, since we were a pre-existing medical facility before July first, 2017, we're statutorily required to convert over.
So you'll work with Bill to get, to get on the agenda so we can, because we do need to have it formal and transparent so everything
Of course, of course. And what I think we can do, I believe we're having, yeah, WSP is doing an updated traffic study for us that includes recreational uses as part of the DOT plan. So maybe I can just give that to you guys and we can, they'll use that. We had it done for, looking at places in Denver. This is using, that was back in 2016 when we got everything approved. None of them existed yet here in Massachusetts in 2016.
You just said that you had it approved, that you had the traffic study.
Yeah, so we had a traffic study approved that
For this facility.
Correct.
With recreation.
Correct. That used numbers from Denver because we didn't have any recreational numbers here in Massachusetts yet. But now that we have recreational numbers here in Massachusetts, they can give us a bit more accuracy instead of trying to extrapolate from Denver, which at the time was the only relevant information.
So we'll see the new study?
Yep.
And that was a big concern, but as we, when we get the site plan, I don't know how that, how are we going to work on that? Is that a modification or is it a new site plan?
Yeah, so the Yeah, because we're not, we're not changing anything with the layout, anything with the design. It's just saying, we can still absorb that amount of cars.
What are the legal requirements? So we hold it as a public hearing?
We have a public hearing, sure. Should advertise it, only modification. We could put you in on the twentieth, I think, right, of March? You'd be ready in a month? Or would you rather wait till?
No, they should have that stuff done in the next week or so.
Did you see that agenda, though?
No, I haven't, I haven't seen it yet.
Oh, March twenty?
So that's March twenty?
No, March twentieth, right?
Well, March twentieth. I didn't, I haven't seen it today.
Pushing a lot of things there, so let's check it out first.
Yeah, let's check it out first and you guys will communicate.
Okay. Yeah, it'll be in a bunch.
We got a couple of issues off our player tonight, those are an approval, so that should open up some of the agendas.
Yeah, I know we have a marijuana advisory meeting sometime in the next two weeks, I think, so I'll probably just come by and swim through that.
Okay.
But I'll also be here the rest of this week and most of next. So we can get together if you have some availability during the day.
Sure.
We'll email it to you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Perfect, thank you. Any, any other questions? All right, appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks, Ken.
Of course.
Ross, good luck.
So I emailed Deb and I, and I know you're on the marijuana advisory too, and I said that we, we're more than welcome to have, you know, the recommendations on things that we should look at, you guys looking at all that?
Yes, pretty much, Jonathan said tonight I hope we're all the same.
So just so when, when, if, we might wanna think about making that sort of, you know, a checklist or a policy or guidance that we might standardize?
No, because I'm leaving, be careful there, I almost slipped and killed myself, it's coming down with snow, so be careful.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Yeah.
You be careful too. All right, so then maybe wanna think about ending this a little early, I don't know, but I was thinking of...
Any question, second or no question tonight?
It, it was just, we were just getting an update, it wasn't a public hearing, but...
Oh, it wasn't?
No, it was, it was just an update, they will come in for a formal, um, uh, you know, public meet, public hearing and you can, will, it'll be advertised on our agenda.
Did you mention some approvals today quickly or whatever for this business?
For, for Green Gold?
Whatever person.
They've already been approved for what they, what they're doing.
They've been approved for recre, for medical a year ago.
Marijuana.
But the, because we can't deny, medical is medical, we can't deny medical, but recreational is, um, a little bit, is different. There's a different state, just different state rules around the recreational piece, so they'll come back and the public will come in and talk about their, their issues and comments.
Have you read the reports from the police raid in California, Colorado and Massachusetts?
When we, when they come back, we'll discuss all of that.
Yeah, and so, so, so we, we believe it'll be March 20th, but it will be advertised as an agenda item.
Sorry.
Oh, you're fine.
Thank you for coming anyway.
Is there anything about this marijuana stuff? On the agenda?
Nothing.
That was it for marijuana.
How about this business with, uh, lawyer for you?
Let's, can we conduct our business? So, we... Yeah, so we have two complaints that we possibly violated the open meeting law. I did watch the whole, they downloaded the whole meeting and played it in my car. It's a good, it's a couple of hours for my three hour drive, my three hour commute. So, and I was watching it in, and I actually ended up taking some notes on what was talked about. So everybody received the copies of the violations, so they, so they, so... So they both were pretty, they both pretty much said the same things in different ways. So what we need to do is we need to discuss on whether we feel we truly violated or we didn't. And then, so we discuss it and then we respond to the two complaints and they decide on whether we've satisfied the complaint or, um, or not. And then if they're not, so we would file it with them, then we would, then we would file it with the AG. And I'm not a lawyer, I'm just reading the, I just read the law, um, obviously we don't get attorneys on our board, but, um, I'm an accountant, so I'm close enough. So we, we give a copy to the complaint and we give a copy to the AG in our response. And then they have so long to say whether they accept it or not. And then if they don't, then the AG reviews, you know, our response and their complaints and determines, um, the, I guess, determines the conclusion and they might say, yes, you violated, you need to hold another meeting or there's, and there's a... So that's kind of how it works, so.
Right now is the first stage of it.
Yeah, so right now is the first stage, we have to discuss it in open meeting and determine if we believe we...
Discuss the complaints.
Discuss the complaints.
So we, we added that open forum basically the night before when we heard, when we had the open meeting.
Yeah, the law.
Some of our law, where they said, said that an open meeting should be in there so that things can be brought to your attention, that depending on order of...
So, I mean, the planning board had open forum as a result of the training that multiple board members in the administrative assistant attended. Um, we were advised that including an open forum at public meetings is a best practice, so that's why.
It wasn't added for a specific purpose, it was added because of that training, which is what I understand.
It was the next day, we were advised to do it, there was no hidden agenda on our part behind that. We were told we should do this, we were trying to comply with what we all learned at the seminar, so they gathered it.
Right, and in fact Jane came after that, because she attended too. So actually Jane came to me and said, do you think we should need to add open forum? And, I mean, as much as I love transparency, I said, really, do we wanna open ourselves up to, you know, open forum? But it was, it's right from the do, because, you know, we're...
I mean, and they are correct in saying that it never appeared on our agenda before because we weren't aware that we should have it. Once we were aware, we tried to do what we should do.
But truly the public, the, the OML training was exactly the night before, so it sounds, you know...
We didn't schedule.
So...
And, and they did say that in that meeting, if the agenda changed, it should be updated prior to the opening.
Yep.
If possible.
Right.
If, if it not possible, so that's what we did. When did, that, that afternoon, that morning, it changed, or actually was, was it that morning?
That morning Jane just, Jane went ahead and changed it and posted it, so, um, and the other, the next complaint...
Updated at nine thirty-five in the morning. It's on our agenda. The original one we posted did not have it, because that was posted January 31st, which was well before the seminar.
This was on February 6th, this was the first meeting we had after getting...
The training was on February 5th, that night.
And this subpoena.
And there's lots of other stuff, I mean, a local, a local community, a NIMBY community posted on Facebook. I have to say that every single one of our planning board meetings is posted on Chilton Happenings, Facebook, all the, I mean, in, in all the websites because, um, they like us or don't like us, some, one days, one day they like us, the next day they don't, it's always posted. So I, I have no control of what's posted, we don't, the board has no control, so, um, sometimes, there's so much gray kind of in between this, it's, I'm just trying to pull out the true violations.
Okay, it says the same thing I just said, when it was originally posted in one of those change.
I have that, that, you know, on both of them it says, you know, uh, preserved Chilton, a NIMBY person, I guess Kristen spoke and, um, the attorney spoke, but in reality citizens are allowed to ask questions during open forum and speak during open forum, so, um, I, I don't...
With all due respect...
We, we haven't opened up the comments, so when we're...
Oh, wait.
We don't actually happen to, happen to, have to open it up to comments, I, I, I may let you speak one more, just give us a moment to get through our stuff, please. Um, the planning board, it said, you know, the planning board answered all questions with facts. The meeting agendas can be modified after they are posted as long as the date and time of modifications is added to the meeting posted and Jane did that. The planning board complied with this requirement as shown in the, um, meeting posting. The Chilton Board meetings are open meetings and therefore anyone can attend.
Right.
So those are my, my comments about what...
And we can't control who goes on what site to see what happens where. We post as we're instructed to post. If somebody else reads our posting and posts it someplace else that maybe somebody else didn't look there, we can't be held responsible for that.
The, I, I think one of the, um, me as chair, I let people speak too much without shutting them down and I think that's a, I just, because I, I truly want the residents to speak up and, and tell, and, and make a lot of comments. And I think I need to work on my, on, on, on being a better chair and saying, all right, you got me through, um, she tries to keep me in line and says, three minutes ding. And I'm like, no, 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 don't tell us everything, we wanna know their whole life story. I mean, I, you know, and I need, and I, and I do appreciate when you guys kinda nudge me a little bit because I do feel people need to be involved in their government and...
I think we should be careful not to rat hole or respond too much to that. Open forum should be a meeting where people can voice their opinion, but...
And not every opinion needs a comment.
Exactly, exactly.
Yeah, so...
Or an explanation, or at that time, maybe it takes a, if it's, if it's involved, it takes a meeting agenda and a different meeting to discuss it.
And I think that's being a better politician, being a better official, I think that, I think, um, we've all been in town for a long time and we, we really do care about our residents and wanna answer their questions and help them and, um, and again, something that I need to work on as maybe that planning training. Or like to be, um, nudge me in the, that are more professional...
And it's human nature to wanna help the people that want to do.
So you're in that meeting too, do you, do you feel that we violated, um, anything during, during that hearing? Because there are two...
I think we, we went to the, the seminar and that's the way they laid it out in the seminar. And as, as discussed, we posted it, Kane posted it on that prior date, on the day of. We proceeded with the new way to do business according to the seminar, so it, it's happenstance, yeah, clunky, yeah, but it, it's just, it's up and running now, so. I know, it's not that there was anything devious or anything, uh, mislaid or it was just, it was just a way to look back, so.
Are we really, I mean, were we really good at it to kinda shut things down and keep things closed? I mean, maybe we could've been better to shut things down, but...
But remember, that was the, the first meeting that we had after, we, we had after being served papers. Yeah, the first time I've ever had a lot of, to communicate about it. There's a lot of emotions going there for, for everyone and...
There was, there was, there was some, some concern there, so.
Fear in my heart, I've seen anything with that.
Still a little bit of fear of kind of that we have, so, um, I mean, I can, I can honestly say that anything that was done wasn't, wasn't done intentional in any way. Was it perfect? I don't, I'm not, it clearly wasn't perfect, but I, I don't think there's any clear violations unless we can pull something out specifically that, I mean, um, we do have the ready response, so, um, clearly in the response, we, we will need, and I'm not sure exactly who, who is writing it. We were told to have staff write it, Bill. John said at the meeting last night, he said, have, have staff do it, but, um, I can probably try to give it a whack, we have to get it out soon.
I think, I think it's more, they wanna see, from what I understood from the seminar, it's more of a process of the town, of the board, if there's a violation or violation filed, coming together and talking about it, and hearing of what's, what, what the possible violation was and trying to, so to learn from what the situation presented itself, so that's what we're doing there.
So what was, you know, the, the part of the, the violation that I'm reading here was more of an information from an outside source to us than us making a decision or moving to a certain deliberation? It was, it was more of getting information to, to better allow us to move forward with, with what we needed to do or what we could do. I, I think definitely in, in the future, I think we, we need to be cognizant of how much back and forth happens between answers, deliberation. Things get off, off topic.
Right, well, like, like here with, you know, kinda break it into the site plan with a subdivision, like it made sense, it made perfect sense, but during that I was like, should we be talking about the site plan?
Yep.
But if we don't, then everything's gonna stop and it's gonna be very inefficient, so I think that...
That site has already been approved, there's no open meeting on that.
And there was no open meeting, it's just the admin piece, so it's, it's not so, it's, it's...
It was planning to plan.
Right, exactly, and it's, and it's not, it's not so black and white all the time.
Yep, yep.
Um, but I definitely agree that we need to, we need to pay a lot of attention to the new laws because there, there are, there's so many specific guidelines.
And the other thing here, I just wanna make one comment, is that in both of these complaints, it says that the open meeting law workshop was the night before and they both say that, yep, we still violated the law. I'm wondering if either one of these people attended that meeting, attended that workshop.
It was recorded, so they, they could've watched it up.
They could've watched it, okay, um, that's all going good, then they would realize that we did not violate anything.
Well, in the letter, we can recommend that they go ahead and watch it because it is posted on the chilton.net site, so...
You know, it says that we should be aware of the forty-eight hour notice. We are aware of the forty-eight hour notice, but it also says that once you change your agenda, regardless of the forty-eight hours, get it posted as soon as you can, which is what we did. There's not forty-eight hours, there's not forty-eight hours. That's not per se a violation in my book.
So I don't know what else we have to, I mean, we also have what they, what they want us to do. They would, um, I asked that the planning board admit to knowingly violating the open meeting laws, we just, I mean, I, I just don't believe that we can do that, we can...
No.
We can, we'll, I mean, we can write in an alternate response, but, um, they, they would like chair of the laptop to be removed from her position because I'm unfit to lead in honest, open and unbiased manner in my unethical behavior, including making false statements. I, I, I honestly have probably put ten to fifteen hours a week into, um, uh, reading and keeping up and trying to fix, um, solve and kind of act as or adjunct, um, legal counsel in a company that goes to law school, reading all the legal files. Um, I'm, I'm, it's really overwhelming and I do honestly try my best, I do try to make all my, um, everything I do, I try to be ethical and I try, I do try to be unbiased. I, many times I have approved or disapproved plans that I felt opposite way because I...
I'm not leaving, I'm just getting through.
I try to follow the, the laws and all of our guidelines and our, when I make my decisions, so I, I, um, when we have our, after our elections, we can re, we can re, we can reseat if, if you guys decide that, that's what we, that's what we wanna do, um...
And the shot, they was required to apologize, there was no requiring, we just let it. And the other one pretty much says the same thing.
Yeah, they're both, they're, they're both about the same, I, I, I mean, I think their response can be pretty similar.
Okay.
That's what we wanna do, um, I can...
So we need to write a response to the people who complain, right?
Yes, and then we have the Senate pop up with the AG, so, um, they'll help me with this, so if, uh, this has to be sent out, I think, you know, in ten or fourteen days. I, I know that we had, had this...
The public body must meet to review the complaint within fourteen business days, um...
After review, about fifteen days, the public body responds. Okay, so we have fourteen days from now.
Fourteen business days.
Okay, so...
To respond to the painting writing and must send the complaint and the response and the description of any action the public body has taken to address it, address it.
So if somebody wants to write the, the response, can they send it out and get an answer through email or do we have to meet to approve?
I think as long as we don't discuss it, so, right, you help, just, um, if I write up something, a draft, and I send it to everybody and we don't discuss it, they just read it and, and...
Send it back to you, make comments.
As long as we, as long as we include you or, you or Jane, as long as we're not talking among, with all of our changes or comments, or we come to the meeting prepared with comments and changes?
I, I think we should send them in so that we can update the paper.
Right.
And then when we meet, the next time, we can review it and send it off, that'll be the...
And so, just so we have...
So are we meeting on the twenty, are we meeting next week?
Twenty seventh.
The twenty sixth, seventh, so we can either do that or the sixth.
Oh, yeah.
So we can either, if it's not ready then, then we can do it the sixth, that's still within the fourteen days.
Right.
So we'll do that, so do we, so we, is that, do we have to?
Now I wouldn't vote on anything on this.
All right, so that, that, that's, that's good then, so we'll write it up in that way, even...
We will follow the instructions.
Alicia and we'll have Ross all to kinda chime in on what they're feeling about it too.
And Jane, if she has anything or notes which, you know...
Do we wanna open this up for comment or do we wanna wait for open forum, get through everything else?
I mean...
Those are comments, don't, don't... That, I, that's fine.
We can open, I'll take a comment.
Okay, so, um, I watched the video of that particular meeting and...
Name and address, please?
Kathy Benjamin, forty-four Old Blister Road. And I do believe there was an open meeting law violation that night. And the chair mentioned that she invited Attorney Pill to attend that meeting. He was invited to speak, that was not on your agenda. That's the open meeting law violation.
I didn't invite him to speak, I, I called him...
You said you invited him to speak, you said it in the video!
But that wasn't what hap, I called him and I said, we're in trouble here, we don't have an attorney, I'm pretty scared, pretty worried. And, um, he said, what can I do? And I didn't, I, I said, we have a, we have a, um, come to our meeting, but I didn't invite him to speak, I didn't invite him to speak, I asked him, I didn't even ask him to come, I said, he can come. It's a public, open, it's an open public meeting, anybody can come from anywhere.
You don't have to be a local resident to attend.
To be anybody, and he has come to meetings before.
He came to one meeting before, but he did not speak, he was invited out by your attorney.
Don't have an attorney.
We don't have an attorney at that meeting.
Mark Barbarowski walked him out of this room. They were talking. He wa, he walked him out of this room, I know what happened.
Well, he, he nicely, he, um, he nicely, um, he came because we were desperate, we didn't know we were gonna have an attorney.
Okay, if that's what you think the open meeting violation is, that's not what was written in here. We are going to respond to this. If you have something different, if you wanna file an open meeting law complaint, go ahead and file it and use different wording. That's all I can, we're not gonna sit here and debate back and forth, I'm sorry.
We get, I mean, I do get that, that this is about your project and you're very sensitive to our, you know, our, our, what, what we did with your project and, and we, we followed all the rules and did everything by the book and we had eight months of hearings, we, we've been, we've, we've worked really hard on that. And I get that you're sensitive and I get that we're being, you're watching very closely, um, the same way that the Board of Selectmen are being watched very closely. It is what it is, so, um, I, I appreciate that, that this is your project.
I know, I also looked at, yeah, you mentioned PCC's website, they seem to know that, uh, there was gonna be discussion about what Attorney Pill was gonna talk about and I get that they came, they asked those questions, it's an open forum, I get that they can do that and that's not an issue. What I, um, really feel is that Attorney Pill was invited here, it was understood what he was gonna talk about and it wasn't on the agenda. That's what I object to.
We don't have the impression that he was gonna talk. He, he, he watches our meetings and he came to a meeting, so, um, that's all I can say.
I do have one other item.
Okay.
Um, I know that he has volunteered to do a defense of this board and I, I'm hoping you do have an attorney and, you know...
Who are you referring to as he?
I'm talking about Pill.
Okay.
A Pill. I am concerned that he's already represented the PCC, how can this board use that in that...
We're not gonna comment on that, that's a little...
I have, I have, I, I have no proof who he represented or what, all I know is that he was the only attorney that applied, um, replied when we were looking for an attorney out of the many, many, many ones we contacted through email and, and through phone calls, so...
Yeah, there seems to be a conflict in interest there, so...
If you have any question about our attorneys, please ask, ask the town administrator or the chair of the Board of Selectmen because they know more about our attorneys than us, so please go ahead and contact them. Is there any, um...
Anything else?
No, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Okay.
Do we have the minutes for the February 7th, I can't...
Do we, um, so did we discuss attorney representation for the planning board, is that part of that?
We have, we, yeah, we have that at our next...
No.
Yep. All right, so since we have that as our, so I'll just...
I guess that goes back to...
So do, attorneys in, in general, so discuss attorney representation with the planning board. Number one, um, it is, it is a commonplace, um, item to have an attorney represent us with open meeting law viola, um, complaints, not violations. I don't believe it's a violation. I, I did ask... I did ask for, to use town council, I sent an email and...
This is on the open meeting appointment?
On, on the open meeting, okay, yes. So I sent an email to the town administrator asking if we could use town council to help us, to guide us because that's, because when they have complaints, they have, they have council.
Do they?
Yes, they do. And so we, we were, I got the email back that Attorney Clausgrove can't, cannot represent us because he is currently investigating our actions. So the town administrator has, is now paying our town council to look into our activities. So because it's conflict of interest, he can, he cannot represent us. So I have asked, I did get up during the select board meeting and ask if we could have an attorney. And I think our reply was, "Figure it out yourself, you have staff, have them do it."
Have staff do it.
So this is...
We'll do the best we can then.
We will, and if the town gets a fine because we don't have an attorney help, then I, I don't believe it's on our heads. I think it might be on the chairs and town administrators, not, we'll do, so we'll do our best. I'm an accountant, I'm not an attorney, we can figure that out.
But moving forward, I think we can just do our best to...
Do our best to what we have.
We have, we've had the training.
I'm not comparing the group of meetings, the minutes of the 7th, which we need to prove though.
Right, I can't, I don't know...
Bill, was there any packets of meetings, minutes to meetings?
No, Jane was out today, so I don't have anything for you.
It's funny because I saw, I saw the draft of that and it is not in here.
I can't find it either.
She had a separate packet for you, and I prepared one for her, it's from what I had.
It wasn't within our packet, I didn't, I didn't see that.
You want to, I can go up and see if I can find it, no, no.
Save it to the office?
Yeah.
Sure, you want to table this and...
Yeah, just move on.
Sure, thanks.
Do we want to, so, so that was, that was the attorney and that was part of the...
Of the meeting.
And then we have eight during the discussion of attorney representing, representing the planning board and that, at this point, we still don't have an attorney. At the, I actually will soon have the minutes for the last meeting we had. And in those minutes, it actually says, "After the March 6th hearing, we will start discussing on whether you will get an attorney or not." So that's the best answer that I have on the attorney representative, the planning board update.
That's for, now that's for the lawsuit.
Yep, yeah, that's the OML attorney on the violation and that's for, we are pretty detailed, very detailed with our posting.
Okay.
So I don't know if anybody...
So we haven't, no loose on that yet?
We just kind of...
Have you got anything on... Do you want to discuss the emergency planning board meeting we have without the minutes? Because, I mean, it was a pretty short meeting and...
Well, we did that twice now. I mean, we did the meeting, the emergency meeting, then our last meeting.
And then we discussed the board, we just need, we just need the minutes for those.
To approve the minutes?
Which are very, very simple, so...
Nice, a big meeting.
Okay, so anything else, everybody's got the attorney, so pretty much there's no update. I try to ask every day or so, through the email or, just to, in case something changed, you know.
In case they forgot?
In case they forgot, they might, you know.
If there is something that got to tell us.
We did get the, that, that letter from Attorney Pill that said that if that March 31st date comes and we don't, we don't officially have an attorney, then he will step up and do, file, show up in court and do all the things that an attorney would do.
Don't we have to refile that because there's only one signature and we'll go to the court?
Yeah, so we haven't done it yet, but we're good because we got the official, we got the official paperwork for the extension.
I don't, I don't think that's, I don't think that's necessary. I think we have, we have time now, there's no longer an emergency for that.
I mean, I, I don't know if...
It was even, it was in the newspaper, so...
I mean, just, yeah, everything goes in newspapers first, exactly.
It's in the newspaper, so we've got something to fall back.
Again, I'm an attorney, can they rescind it, can all that, I don't know, but that's not on our, that's not on us right now.
I don't think that, I don't think that legally can be without approval by the town.
If it gets rescinded, we should be aware, and if we're aware, then we can take action.
Yes, we'll kind of let that be. But definitely feel free, and anybody who's listening, feel free to call or email or help rally the troops, we would love an attorney, they're very good to have. And though at our town meeting, we'll be asking for some money to have our own attorney just so we have one in case we need...
We discussed the format, right?
Yep, so we already discussed the format of the open forum. Oh, so we can, do we have any questions for open forum, so do you have any question?
No, I'm done.
Anybody else?
There ain't no money here.
True, nothing could.
Appreciate your video skills. You never thought your meetings would get so many...
You have another question. There was a couple of meetings that you didn't have videotaped very recently. What's your procedure for making sure that you've notified, I don't know this guy over here, that you're having a meeting so that it is video?
He looks at all the meeting postings.
So it's your responsibility to check the postings?
To check the calendars, yeah.
Okay.
I don't recall a meeting without Drew.
The 13th.
Yeah, we had the...
That was the...
Yeah, we had the emergency meeting, then we had a meeting to...
To discuss the emergency meeting.
We had a meeting of an emergency...
So we had an emergency meeting and then the following, we posted to talk about the emergency meeting.
To comply with the...
That was an off-scheduled meeting, it was, it was posted.
Wait, when you look at 2018, there's only one set of minutes in the entire...
Are you talking minutes or videos?
I'm talking minutes, I mean, it's great to have the videos because then you can look to see what you missed or what was discussed. But one set of written minutes for the entire year. So when you don't have video, how does the public get your minutes?
Well, we had a little problem with, our plan supplier was taken away and then, and then we were fighting for that and...
But every single meeting we have, except for that one in March 3, or February 13th, didn't get...
Can we make sure that the meetings from the 7th and the 13th get online? Because those are not available in video, so we should just make that priority.
I have the, the last two and the one, the one that Robin attended. I have, I have very detailed minutes.
Those should be posted online, just put on the video.
Yeah, I will, I just, if they're mostly done, I have some details that, that...
Jane is in tomorrow, they're probably going to get posted tomorrow. If we have them here to, tonight.
The minutes, yes.
We're waiting, I know we have them.
We have the emergency minutes, but we don't have the, the last one, the one...
The 13th?
Yeah, the one.
She was there taking notes, so she, she should have the minutes.
Oh, we have, I have the tape.
Oh, we did record it?
Yeah, got, got voice recorded, yes.
That's where I, that's where I have the quotes, that we have risked the town of Charlton everything because you called.
And moving forward, the board has also authorized some help to catch up on minutes from last year.
I saw that in the video.
Jane has been, Jane has been working on a grade, like, she's been doing things, we've, I mean, we have only a part-time planner, 20 hours, we used the 40 hours, and she's been doing all of, accepting plans and doing all those kind of things instead of writing up minutes. So we will, we will have that up, I, I know it's much easier to read the summary than watch those three-hour meetings.
We...
I mean, is there anything else, anybody else that we have that unknown time of posting? I don't have anything.
Do we, want to talk about the new planning director position? Or is that something that we can, we can make public or...
Yep, so our new, our new planner, I won't, I won't say the name right now, but our new planner has accepted the position and we, at this point, it looks like he may very well start March 11th where I, there is an employment, like, the employment contract is ready for me to sign, so we'll get that moved. We'll hold off on that. I didn't realize that the town, the H I Director's got an administrative assistant. Interesting, it's interesting that we can pay for an administrative assistant, but we can't pay for a legal counsel.
No.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Bill.
Okay, so we can't do those, but we can do those next year.
Okay.
Do we need to continue that officially or is that just...
What, the minutes? It is not really open here.
We'll do that.
It'll be on the next meeting.
Okay. Can we do that, just to get it over with on the 26th?
Yes.
I don't think, I think we always have approving minutes on our, we can just make sure that they're on approving the minutes.
And the only agenda item we have for the 26th is to discuss how many possible changes.
Yep, so everybody bring their, their notes. I think I have like four different zoning bylaws, all different comments that I need to consolidate.
July 2, 2017.
On that, on, on that, remember how the marijuana, the bylaw that the selectmen voted on, that they wanted, that, like, the timing was missed on the banning of recreational? And the citizens voted on it and the Board of Selectmen voted on it, but we couldn't go to town meeting because it, we didn't have time to have a public hearing on it. I think we need to follow up on that. Remember at our last town meeting, we're talking about, we were talking about how next week we're working on the zoning changes, but remember last...
The Board of Selectmen filed a zoning...
They voted to have us have that recreational, that, the ban of recreational on the zoning and we didn't, we couldn't hear it.
We didn't have time for a public hearing, so we couldn't, so we talked about pushing that off until March 1 or something.
But since they voted on it and it's still kind of an open item, I don't know if something...
They'd have to vote on it again because I think they only had 90 days. It had to be submitted at the town meeting.
Or we could, or we could sponsor it for the, for the public, the residents, if they, if they show up and want that. So we'll have that, but that will be the public hearing we hold, right? We'll have to make sure that we're pretty vocal about that so people can show up if they want that.
We should have a session where we talk about what zoning articles we want to bring forward this...
Yep, and that's next week.
That's next week.
Okay, what time, what day?
That was the meeting that we added to the 20, the 26th.
Specifically to talk about...
Just, just to talk about that.
27.
27.
Okay, then I will look into that too, what we had before from that.
Because I think there's wording already for that, right, for that, for what the Board of Selectmen had? I think it was...
Yeah, there was, there was a...
I'll dig that out.
It was all written up, but then we just couldn't see if...
It was a warrant article.
So it's no word...
We can just dig that up and just say, "This is, this is what it was."
I mean, because it, the bylaw passed at the town meeting to ban the recreational and if the, if the majority of the town wants us to sponsor, whether we, whether we support it or not, it's definitely worth it getting on, getting on the warrant.
Let the town vote?
I mean, I don't, either way, it doesn't make difference, I just want the residents to get the things on.
Last meeting, Bill had given us the 2018 Planning Board Annual Report and the only thing I found in there, actually, we had site plans denied, Bill. The one site plan that was denied was actually denied in 2019.
Oh, it's January 2nd, yeah, okay.
So I suggest pulling that out.
Okay.
Good catch, I didn't even catch that. You didn't catch that?
I didn't catch that.
Seriously? You're like a technical guy.
No, I should have picked that up.
So are we done, anything else?
Did you sign that letter for Peter Keters?
I will.
What I have is just a copy.
Yeah, I don't even, I don't have the original, is it upstairs?
That was the original, I got from Jessica.
Okay.
I put it in the one that's marked your name on, with the chair.
Is that where you had all of your stuff, you were in my pile of stuff? No, I'm not in yours, am I? No, 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 that's, that's my... I mean, I understand how you're... I don't want to put this up in my bag. We need a better one.
You had it, you had it, you had it stuck.
No, I didn't, she, she had, that was the original letter.
All right, that's it, are we ready to go?
Do we, do we need to do an executive session tonight? Instead of due litigation, I just don't think there's anything that's pressing for that, so...
No, because it sort of resolved itself, we got the extension.
Make a motion to close the meeting?
Second.
On paper?
I know seven.